Everybody, it's 10:00 AM. We're going to call to order our Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, March 8th. We're happy you all to join us. Would you please rise with us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all very much. At this time, we will accept public comment for items that do not appear on today's agenda. Is there public comment at this time? Yes, sir, please. If you'd like to address us at the podium, if you would be willing to state your name and the municipality in which you reside here in Center County.
Sure. Good morning. My name's Chris Potolevo. I reside in Harris Township, Bollesburg specifically. Some of you may recall me. I spoke about two years ago at the large gathering for mental health over at the Annex Building. That was well done. Like so many in Center County, unfortunately, my family is still struggling with a loved one with dependency and behavioral health issues. The purpose of my visit here this morning is to propose an idea that may be new, may even be innovative for Center County. A little background, are you aware of the Mount Entney Community Health Needs Assessment Report? And as you well know then, this is a program to focus our hospital to ensure that money is allocated based on the actual needs of our community, Center County specifically. This study determined that the top three issues for Center County are chronic disease, behavioral health, and substance use disorder. In many cases, behavioral health and substance use are completely intertwined, and this creates a vicious cycle for many young people, and it manifests at a relatively early age. Unfortunately, the patient then turns 25 and falls off of the parent's healthcare plan, and they're incapable of holding down a full-time job, which sets up the scenario that they're completely dependent on the government for what little healthcare that they can get. There's no safe and secure place for people trying to recover with monitoring without healthcare in Center County. Many commit a crime and end up in jail. The closest facilities that can help are Co-Forge in Huntington and Pyramid in Altoona. Pyramid advocates a 90% success rate for those that participate in both the in-house program, followed by one of their monitored transition homes. Center County has nothing like this. In the case of my daughter, she went through the in-house program at Pyramid and refused to stay in Altoona. That wasn't her community. She didn't know anybody down there, and she didn't want to be isolated from her family. She came home and unfortunately did not make it. My solution is focusing around the Center Crest Building. It's already set up for individual rooms with plumbing and other individual needs. Possibly start small with 10 rooms. Work in agreement with Pyramid, initially keeping the resident program in Altoona, but have them set up a satellite facility in our building. They've been doing this, and no need to reinvent the wheel, and that could contain costs, so you're not completely starting from scratch. This can then be expanded to other behavioral health tracks and ultimately offer a facility that can address a wide range of issues. Ultimately, reduce homeless, address the community needs, and filter people in need from prison time. In conclusion, the Asagi tragedy may have been averted if the family had a safe and secure facility that he could have resided in with proper supervision, ensuring that his meds were monitored and adjusted, not self-terminated, possibly from adverse side effects. The only option was an apartment with a friend, unmonitored. My daughter had a relapse. She's currently in prison right now. Yes, she was on probation for a DUI, but she broke probation by having a relapse of a disease, and Center County's only option is jail. Name me one other disease that a relapse results in jail time. You heard from many people two years ago with similar issues that either they were encountering or dealing with loved ones. Remember, number two and three of the community assessment report specifically addresses these issues. This is Center County speaking as a whole. I know there are many challenges in setting this up, but would not that be a far better use of the building than office space, at least for a small section of it? Can I ask that this concept be at least part of the building usage assessment and potentially consider this, to offer some vital needs for our community? My daughter would be one of them, and there is a host of other people. Let me throw a little fact at you. Do you have any idea how many mental health, 302 mental health warrants are served by our police department, just the State College Borough Police Department? It averages one every 1.5 days. That came right out of the 70-some page of the mental health report that you set up to have done. Think of that. 1.5 per day are served. That's an incredible number of people, and we have nothing in Center County to address this specifically. I want to thank you for your time and consideration, and I hope you don't view it as a disservice, but I need to be somewhere else right after this, so I'd like to excuse myself. Is this something that is, that can at least be studied versus just transition that building to an office space?
We appreciate your comments. Thank you for being here. We do remember you from the third floor of the Annex, and thank you for taking the time today to be here and sharing not only an update on how we could be doing as county government with Center Crest, but also how you're doing and your family. We hope nothing but the best for your daughter, so thank you for being here. We are in the midst of a study, as you said. We have several options that we're looking at with the design of the building.
Yes.
One of the initial challenges may be the usage, what the building is permitted to be used for, and we're working with Bellefonte Borough very closely. So as we have conversations with them, we can mention that. We've also been approached, just to provide you some updates, for veterans, drug treatment, a wide variety of different treatment programs, because as it was a nursing facility, it could potentially transition to that. So as we have conversations with the Borough, we will absolutely ask them, bring it up to them. I will say the current design we have is, does not have the type of treatment that you're talking about, but we'll ask them, and we'll see. And please, on the sign-in sheet, leave your information so we can contact you. I think we may have it from before, but we'd like to stay in touch.
I appreciate that, and I've talked to a couple of different political organizations, and when they're brutally honest, it boils down that people are very hesitant to have transition homes in their neighborhood, and that makes it very difficult. You've got a building sitting there, and I understand there's some very good people in the commissioners that issue permits for buildings and stuff. They may be able to work with you on that permitting, so. Thank you, and I'll leave my contact information. Thank you.
Thank you very kindly. Is there any other public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none. Any additions to our agenda today?
None that I'm aware.
Okay, all right. We will look for a motion to approve our minutes, and this would be from our Tuesday, March 1st meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Commissioners meeting.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion needed on the minutes?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Moving into proclamation number four of 2022, we are excited to have some folks from our Cooperative Extension Office and the great work they do with 4H, so we will welcome up at this time, please. If you could say a quick hello to everybody and just introduce yourself. So, good morning.
Absolutely. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having us. My name's Matt Germino. I am the new 4H Youth Development Extension Educator. I'm very new. This is only the beginning of my fourth week.
Hello.
So, I can plead ignorance on some questions if you end up having any.
You have a veteran right behind you, though.
Yes, I do. I have a veteran right over there. She came as my backup. But thank you again for having us, and I really appreciate the time and the willingness to work with us. I know next week is our actual PA 4H week, but unfortunately, I'll be out of town at a conference that week, so I was really pleased that we were able to coordinate this, to have this proclamation go forward. I just wanted to give an update, a quick update on some things happening in Center County 4H. Unfortunately, we were not able to get any of our groups here with spring break and work schedules and everything. I know myself and Mary Beth, we worked across the board, and we got shot down everywhere. But just a few quick updates. Our livestock judging group actually won their state competition last year and received an invitation to the national competition in Colorado. Unfortunately, they did not accept it just because of health and safety protocols with travel and everything, but they did receive that invitation. And hopefully, moving forward, with everything starting to ease up, if they receive that invitation again, we would absolutely work with them to, you know, facilitate that travel. We did have members attend the junior leadership and the leadership conferences on the state level. This year, they did it in a hybrid model, so it was both in-person and virtual. It seemed to be with great results as well. Looking back at our Grange Fair numbers, we had a total of 317 animal projects be brought to the Grange Fair. On top of that, in other categories such as wildlife, veterinarian science, photography, engineering, food nutrition, we had a total of 134 projects brought. And looking back at our impact numbers from last year, those numbers are actually very comparable to what was, what was brought last year. So we're not seeing as much of a drop-off as what we might expect, given everything happening right now, and hopefully, we're going to see that more of an uptick moving forward. Next week also, we have Ag Literacy Week that we've been working with the Farm Bureau on. Mary Beth has been working diligently with all of the school districts, private schools, and homeschools in the area to coordinate this. It comes with a book this year, and Mary Beth can show it to everybody here.
Can I pass it to her?
Yeah, absolutely. It is the story of a soybean farmer and how soybeans get produced. It comes along with an activity book for the teachers, as well as some other guides for the kids. We right now total have this book going into 42 classrooms across three different school districts. It would be Baldigo Area, State College, and Bellefonte, as well as several private schools in the area and a homeschool. So we're really seeing a lot of engagement with that. And to piggyback off this, there is a project where the kids in those classrooms are going to be bringing in donation items to go to local food banks. So we will be collecting canned goods and non-perishables from them that will end up being delivered to five different area food banks. So it's a really great community effort on their part, and we're really hoping that this is going to help us start to bridge a gap and help build that connection more within the local school districts to help bring our 4H programming more into those areas, into the classroom area, and really engage those schools outside of, you know, just the fair and those community groups and help build and expand our program. Looking for, looking into the future, you know, like I said, we're going to be looking at working more with those school districts to bring more STEM opportunities into the classrooms. I know I sit on our 4H statewide STEM team, and we are getting ready to put on a STEM symposium in Pittsburgh at the beginning of May that will be bringing people from all over the country to engage in different STEM opportunities that they can be taking into the classroom. And we are excited that 4H camp is coming back this year. In-person residential, it's not a day camp. It did get moved from Camp Kansataki to Camp Harmony in Somerset. That's more due to travel and the timeline. Camp Kansataki has growing programs that they could only allow us over the week of the Fourth of July, and we weren't willing to do that. So from what I've been told, I haven't visited it, Camp Harmony is going to be a great location, but we coordinate with several other counties. Many of them are out further west, and so this will help facilitate some of that travel, you know, given the current climate of things and make things a little bit easier. But with that being said, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions. If I don't have that information, I will be looking at my veteran behind me here.
Sounds good. Thank you, Matt, very much, and thank you, Mary Beth, as well. Any questions or comments for our 4H appreciation or 4H week here in Center County?
I think it's great that we're doing it.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Doing so many great things. You know, not to dismiss the Grange Fair, because, you know, you're a big part of what goes on over there, but throughout the year, there are all sorts of activities, all sorts of programs that children get involved in. I think, I think everybody can appreciate the great work you do and the great work Extension does in promoting not only agriculture, but all, you know, healthy living and all the other programs and technology here in Center County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so in addition to the livestock sales, please make sure you invite us to the robotics competition, and as Steve mentioned, all of the other wonderful things that 4H does throughout Center County. Appreciate what you do. Thanks.
Absolutely. Mary Beth, please.
Sorry.
This is Mary Beth.
I'm aging with the county, thank you. I just, while you say that, the robotics team is off to a competition again next week, so they are in full steam ahead. And we have a program for elementary school kids all the way up to high school kids, and they are so engaged, and they do phenomenal work. I've been on Zooms with kids in third grade who are explaining to me how to do things, so I'm learning, I'm being schooled and learning a lot from them. I also wanted to mention quickly with our Ag Lit program, we are very fortunate here that the Ag community works together. So our Center County Farm Bureau and our Center County Pomona Grange are providing the books for each of those classrooms, and then we provide the readers. So our 4H kids will go into the classroom to read the book. So it's a partnership, and we're all working together, and it's, it's a great project that we can help piggyback off of and do some more in the classroom. And we're real excited to have Matt. Matt has an awesome background. I know he didn't say, but he's got an education background that's deep, so we're really looking forward to seeing what we can do with our local schools and community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt, for everything. It's good stuff.
We will look at this time for a motion. Would there be a motion for the proclamation?
Motion to adopt proclamation number four of 2022, proclaiming March 13th through 19th as Pennsylvania 4H weekends, Center County.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on the proclamation? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. And Matt, we can, we'll give you the proclamation. Maybe we can get under the camera here. You're so excited to, you know.
I'm only doing it if Mary Beth comes up.
Yeah, Mary Beth and Matt.
Oh, my.
Sure to get, I'm sure he can do it. Matt, it's very nice to meet you. Thanks for being here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, maybe come a little bit more over.
Get under Mark.
Do I need to move?
No.
You stay still.
Okay.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's a first.
That's a first.
There we go. Okay, yeah. We're a little rusty at this.
That's all right. We're back at it.
All right. Here we go. So thank you once again from everybody at 4H. We'll turn now to Margaret for our first contract on today's agenda.
Thanks very much. This first item is a contract with Waste Management of Pennsylvania, formerly known as Advanced Disposal for our correctional facility. We're going to ask that this item be tabled so that we have an opportunity to follow up on a couple of details and questions that have arisen since the agenda was put together. So if we could table for a week, that would be helpful.
Okay. Would there be a motion to table the contract with Waste Management?
Motion to table the contract with Waste Management of Pennsylvania.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. All right. And we are so excited to have Mimi Cooper from the Center County Recycling and Refuge Authority with us to talk through some of these grants, and if you would, yeah, join us upfront. We love the partnership with the Recycling and Refuge Authority and wanted to make sure that we approve these grants as soon as possible, so good morning.
Good morning, and Joanne Schaefer expresses her condolences. She just got back from vacation and hit the ground running yesterday. So we have two grants that are before you, and these are part of the pass-through agreement that we have with the county. And the first one is the 901A Municipal Waste Planning Grant, and it will provide $75,000 towards the process for our solid waste plan that has to be completed for the next 10 years by the end of this year. Many documents have gone into this. We've had a long-range strategic planning committee meeting, a waste composition study, several things. So that $75,000 will help support that and our legal fees towards that. Both of these grants have a match of $18,750 from the authority. The second grant is for our household hazardous waste education. This actually is a two-year grant. $75,000 will cover the education costs that go into educating county residents about our household hazardous waste event. This year's event is already scheduled. It is April 29th from 8:00 to 4:00, and April 30th from 8:00 to 2:00. We are taking, again, registrations via Eventbrite. Pre-registration is required, but we have 1,200 slots, and we're already up and running with about 200 residents registered. I will leave details for you on the, those items that we take and don't take, just for your, your information. And also, I wanted to invite you, and on Earth Day, we're having again our first back-in-person Green Business Partner luncheon, and that will be April 14th at Foxdale Village. And they happen to be our very first Emerald Award winner. They do an amazing job with their sustainability practices, and are very happy to showcase it, and we invite the commissioners certainly to attend for that. So, any questions about our grants?
Any questions, comments? All good. Okay. Yeah, please. Yeah, please.
I'd be remiss if we didn't thank you for your recent participation. You know, a lot of folks don't even understand the Solid Waste Authority or the Refuge Authority, whatever, is a component of Center County government, and we've had a longstanding, great relationship with, with your organization and Ted Onyfrak as your, as your director. But I really want to say thank you on behalf of Margaret and the commissioners and all the other folks, allowing us and the Department of Health to use your facility for COVID testing over the last near term. It's difficult to find the right fit, to find a place that actually can, can pull that off and make it work, and you folks did it.
Thank you.
Did an amazing job.
We were happy to have it, and from what we heard from the staff that works it, it was a good facility to use, just the in and out, and for them operationally, it seemed to be a good fit. So we were very, very happy to host that for you, so.
Well, there's been some challenges. Obviously, when, when you're overrun by, by folks that need testing, that, that creates some issues, and you, you stepped up and did an amazing job, and we, I think, represent.
Thank you. I will convey that to Joanne, both Joanne and Ted, and our board.
That we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's exciting that you're going to be back in person for the Green Business Luncheon. That's always a great time to collaborate and to see and to recognize all the folks who do great work to have a more sustainable waste stream here in Center County, and the fact that we can help with 150,000 in grant from the state is really exciting today. So, well, we're, we're excited to, I think, look for a motion to approve these at this time. Would there be a motion?
Motion to approve the Center County Recycling and Refuge Authority, Items 1 and 2.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any final comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Thank you very much again. Have a great day. Thank you. Okay. We're going to welcome up Natalie Cornum to discuss our Human Services items. Good morning, Natalie.
Good morning. So the first item is on behalf of Children Youth. This is our Act 148. It's the Second Quarter Fiscal Year Report. So this report runs from July 1 through December 30th, and they, the spending in that quarterly report will indicate $6,85,177, which is 49.04% of our budget. So we are on target with our spending thus far this fiscal year.
Thank you, Natalie. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay. Hearing and seeing, we look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the Act 148, Second Quarter Fiscal Year 21, 22 Report.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay.
So then, on behalf of Transportation, this is the submission of the Disclosure of Lobbying Activities and Federal Funding Accountability and Transparency Act Subrecipient Data Sheet. This is particular to the federal funding the Transportation receives for the purchase of the vans. And so this is a required paperwork, and our solicitor, Betsy, has reviewed and signed off on this paperwork.
Thank you, Natalie. Look for a motion to approve this submission.
Motion to approve the submission as required for the Section 5310 program.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Welcome up Ray Stellinas at this time. We're going to look at RACP and also some, an item for CEDOC. Good morning, Ray.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning. We have two separate items on the agenda today. The first one, we have Forms PR 1 and PR 1A under Payment 4 for the submission to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Governor's Budget Office for our RACP or Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program in the amount of $454,454 for the Titan Park Plant 1 improvements. The total funding we started with, with Titan was 2.5 million. The amount paid out thus far has been 2.4 million, and there is an amount of $85,322 remaining for the project. So we're requesting approval of payment number four.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this?
Just wanted to mention very quickly that the entire Titan metal plant has been a great cooperation between the state, county, local municipality. Wonderful things happening there between the Axeman Brewery, Long Beestrow, Titan Market, and now the new Titan Hollow, which is a combination of Mad McIntosh Ciderie and the Alloy Kitchen. And CEDOC, our local regional economic development group, did provide a loan to assist the Alloy Kitchen in opening. So a lot of government support here for our local small businesses.
That's great. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments or questions on this? Okay. All right. We'll look for that motion to submit.
Motion to approve submission of the application for payment.
Second. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. And a request from CEDOC.
Yes. We have a partnership currently with CEDOC for the CDBG program, and with the CDBG program, we do draw down monies to pay for projects at the county level, and at the Bellefonte Borough, as one of our recipients of CDBG. The IDAS Online Access Request, IDAS is the Integrated Dispersment Information System through HUD, we're asking for authorization of Kelly Rowe, who's the fiscal analyst, to assist us with drawing down those funds to be considered as certified for the IDAS drawdowns, so we're asking for that approval as well.
Ray, would there be a motion to approve that request?
Motion to approve the IDAS access request for Kelly Rowe.
I will second that.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Ray, thank you again.
Thank you.
For our consent agenda today, we look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve this week's consent agenda.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. And we will turn to Commissioner Higgins for our check run today.
Sure. We have a much smaller than normal check run of $536,981.76. The checks of the week are to Housing Transitions totaling $26,921.83 for a broad variety of housing services. Appreciate the partnership with Housing Transitions. I know they're quite busy right now, and we appreciate all of the extra work. So would like to make motion to approve the check run dated March 4.
I will second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve today's check. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. We have no administrators report today, okay, but we do have a letter of support in front of us, and this is for the Build Back Better Regional Challenge Phase 2 application, and the Pennsylvania Wilds Center for Entrepreneurship is, or the PA's Wild Center is looking to go after some resources there, and this would cover their whole territory and the PA Wilds. We had invited some of their staff to be here today. They couldn't make it, but they did send along some great information about how to be utilized. Build Back Better, this challenge is really looking for a regional approach, and, you know, the PA Wilds, it covers most of northern Center County, and then up north of us, really has a regional approach. So I think we'd be enthusiastic to support this and would bring it in front of us for any other discussion or consideration. Any questions or comments?
It's a very, very exciting proposal. Build Back Better Challenge has significant federal funding, and they're looking at funding maybe from 25 to 30 applications nationwide. So wonderful to see that we have an application covering northern part of Center County and state of finals, and maybe to explain in a little more detail, their focus is tourism and recreation, which makes the area a lot more fun place to live in, a very fun place to visit, and creates jobs in a broad variety of rural parts of Pennsylvania. So I think it's a great idea. Happy to support it.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. All right. We look for a motion to support then.
Motion to approve the support of the Motion to approve the support of the PA Wilds Outdoor Recreation Industry Cluster Development for the Build Back Better Regional Challenge by participating in regional sign-on line.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. And we'll turn it to Commissioner Dershowitz for a voter registration report.
Okay. This morning, we have 105,016 registered voters in Center County. That's down 40 registrants from last report. The highlight reel includes 44,040 Democratic voters, 146 Green Party, 667 Libertarian, 14,138 No Affiliation, and 42,181 Republicans. When you add the 3,844 other voters in, you get the 105,016 total. The feature party of the day is the Unity Party, and the Unity Party has one member, and we'd like to recognize them this morning, because I'm not sure who that one person is, but hey, they're united, so that's all that matters. So, the, the other, the other feature of the day is Precinct Number 55. We'd like to recognize, that's Half Moon proper, and they vote at the municipal building in, in Half Moon Township, and we'd like to recognize them. In the last election, they had 895 registered voters. There were 369 ballots cast, which led to a 41.23 percentage voter turnout. And the folks that make it happen, the judge of elections is Daniel Perkins, and the minority inspector is Donald Juchter, Yuchter? It's J-U-E-C-H-T-E-R. Sorry if I butchered that name up, but we're doing the best we can. Majority inspector is Tammy Perkins, and the clerk is Stephen Warner, and we want to thank them for everything they do and the folks in the space. But, we'll be seeing you again in May, so hang tight. All right. That's what we got.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
We would like to just do another announcement, another reminder for folks who have taken the broadband speed test online. To please do so, gives us great data that we can compile and use for federal and state grants. It's going to be running for about another two and a half weeks, and so we really encourage people to, again, go to countypa.speecessurvey.org and take that, you know, few-minute survey, help us get some data. Any executive sessions to report to?
No executive sessions to report. However, the Board does need to meet an executive session before we adjourn to address a personnel issue and two legal issues.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. Balance of our schedule for this week and in the future. Any questions, Gary, at this time?
Can you summarize what kind of response you've gotten to the broadband survey so far?
I don't know if Ray would have any data. Liz Los is our lead on that here, and she, she could absolutely give you an update if, if we wanted to maybe set that up, yeah.
First gentleman spoke here. Are you hearing a lot from groups? Are you doing outreach in terms of ideas for future uses at Center Crest?
We are, again, the three that we've heard of is, and I think it's because we've had the building as a nursing home for so long, that as it's transitioned out, folks are still thinking, could it be used in a healthcare sphere? So, we've heard from veterans, organizations, drug treatment folks, and today, mental health groups. And we've heard mental health groups discuss that as well. The way that we have the building structured now is we have a certain percentage that we could rent out for private use. However, it's going to be, again, something that we're going to have to work very closely with the Bellefonte Borough on, and ultimately, they will have the, the final decision on what type of use we can have for it and what things are in there. If it needs to be licensed, which is most likely the scenario that the gentleman this morning talked about, that, again, would be additional steps. We know some of the concerns that the Center Care Board, well, not the concerns, the, the stark reality was, they could not stay in that building because of the federal regulations on, just the requirements about how it was set up, access, et cetera, and so it didn't meet life safety standards. The same things may be potentially in play if we're looking at treatment options there. So, again, more discussions that we would have as we go, as we go forward.
One of the other challenges, a few years ago, if you recall, the Bellefonte Borough took action as to limit our ability to repurpose that structure. And so, to Michael's point, we would have to work closely with them in any discussion outside of probably an office building or, or some other more conventional use. So, at this point, our, our options are limited in regard to what we can do with that facility.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Okay. We look at this time to go to executive session for personnel and legal matters.
Motion to recess the Commissioners' meeting for executive session at 10:30.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
We'll call you.
The motion is carried.
We'll call you.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll turn my ring.